I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call of attendance?
Done.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda?
Remove.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion? I would like to thank the Modestia Parent Teacher Organization for the two donations they've made this month to O-H Anderson Elementary School. In addition to these financial donations, we have other people who donate much of their time and energy to our schools and we thank them as well. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, sorry. Different meeting, I have to bang it at the end of everything. Okay. Presentations and recognitions. Student, staff and community recognitions. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Board, it's always a highlight when we get to recognize some of the great things that are happening in the school district. So at this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Nickelby, Principal, to come forward and start with some of the presentations. And the board members to please move around in front.
In the Modestia High School class of 2018, there are six National Merit Commended Scholars. These students performed in the top 3% of students nationally who took the PSAT during their junior year last fall. Since the PSAT is not a required exam, the students who chose to take it are by nature a self-selected, high-achieving group. Therefore, to be recognized in this way is an incredible honor by these six outstanding students. As I call your names, I would ask you to come to the front podium and receive your certificate. Peyton Baker.
Our next student is Noah Eberhart. Julia Faraher cannot be here with us tonight, but I will make sure that her mother gets the certificate. So let's have a round of applause. Aiden Swick. The receiver, but I will make sure that Aiden gets her certificate also. A round of applause.
Also, in the class of 2018, we have three students who are named National Merit semifinalists. The nationwide pool of semifinalists includes only 16,000 students and represents less than 1% of high school seniors. There are only 300 semifinalists in Minnesota. These students will continue in the National Merit Scholarship Competition and vie for almost 7,500 scholarships totaling over $33 million. Please help me congratulate Alec Jan. Congratulations.
We have a couple of more recognitions to hand out here. The first one is for the Capital Division's High School Principal of the Year. This is an organization, the Minnesota Associations of Secondary School Principals, that selects eight different principals. They're nominated by colleagues and so forth in their particular area. There are eight in Minnesota and the Capital Region's Principal of the Year is Kathy Nickelby. In addition, our Modestia Teacher of the Year is here. That's Ms. Kathy Mackin. Ms. Mackin has a passion for her students like all great teachers do. She's an excellent communicator like all great teachers. She has great curricular knowledge like all great teachers, but she has set herself apart in a couple of different areas by being remarkable in these things. She's a remarkable student advocate. She was remarkable at individualizing, finding and supporting students' strengths and passions. She has a passion for equity and she's outstanding with coaching her colleagues. I'm very pleased to recognize Kathy Mackin as Modestia Teacher of the Year.
So many people.
Oh, no one's staying for the meeting.
A few are.
Okay. I'm being too loud or not loud enough?
Next item on our agenda is Modestia High School Innovation. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Board, innovation is something that we take very seriously at Modestia and are keenly striving to do, things that are innovative and unique and just putting forward some great ideas. At this time, Kathy Nickelby and Jim Lane are here to present some of the things that the high school's been doing about innovation. So, Mrs. Nickelby?
Welcome, Earth. Thank you again for having us to the podium. Innovation isn't always a thing. It's more the way we like to do things. We can look at the big things that we've accomplished at the high school with the Lunch and Learn, with our Capstone Pilot Program for students, and the list goes on and on. One of the things that Jim Lane is going to be able to share with you tonight is the way we do innovation at the high school. Jim is a science teacher at the high school. He teaches life science, environmental science, and is our Student Leadership Council Advisor, Ecology Club Advisor. He is also a finalist for the Presidential Award of Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching and a Knowles Science Teaching Foundation Fellow. So please join me in welcoming Jim.
So I'm going to try something different than what I normally do, and that's reading from notes. So bear with me, because this is something new for me. I think when I came here six years ago, we had a different paradigm than what we have today in education. And I think this quote sums it up, is that we are asking students to find questions for answers, sorry, trying to find answers for questions they have never had to ask themselves. And if you think about that, that is that traditional teacher-centered approach towards education. And I think that in the last six years, we've made a shift away from that. The societal shift in questioning has moved away from what I would call an answer-based economy towards a question-based economy. Six years ago, the answer-based economy was the teacher was the center of all knowledge and expected to know the facts and be the source of all things. Whereas in a question-based economy, we are now surrounded by answers. We have this magical device in all of our pockets that has access to billions and billions of facts that we can answer at a whim, and all of our curiosities can be settled with a simple Google search. In this answer-based, or in this question-based economy, the answers fill our world, and the real innovation has to come from asking better questions. Asking those questions that are ungooglable. Being able to sift through all of that data, being able to synthesize all of these answers into something meaningful and something profound. So I'm not purposely, my setup for the slideshow tonight is purposely asking questions rather than providing answers. So if we are to produce innovators, we have to nurture that questioning attitude. We have to move away from that traditional answer-based approach and allow students to ask their own questions. One way of doing that is through the inquiry process. And unfortunately, I think this is an overused kind of catchphrase in a lot of education circles where you see the word "inquiry" and everybody lights up like it's something new and exciting. But it really is, when done correctly, I believe, the future towards education. There are four levels of inquiry, the first being level one, which is a confirmational level. This is kind of the traditional, we take notes on something, then we do a lab, or we do a project that confirms what we already know. So there's really no independent thought here, it's more confirming what we already know. Then there's structured inquiry, I'll talk more about that, guided inquiry, and finally, open inquiry. The goal of inquiry is to decentralize the learning away from that answer-based society of the teacher being the be-all, end-all, and place more emphasis on the student's own learning, the student's questioning, and the students as a source of knowledge and a source of investigation. So POGO, it stands for Process-Oriented Guided Inquiry Learning. When I started here six years ago, I had a student in my first-hour class who marched down to Mrs. Nickelby's office and tried to get me fired after we did our first POGO. This was because it totally shifted her expectation of what biology was going to be like. She was expecting that confirmational lab, we're going to do notes, and then we're going to do a confirmational lab. And when I challenged this student and this entire class with this inquiry process, it flipped the entire paradigm onto them. No longer was I going to be the one answering their questions. In fact, I was the one providing them with questions and very rarely with answers. POGO is a guided inquiry process, so I'm providing a framework for students to work in, often with complex models that go through this learning cycle. So they explore the model, they're given some information, they have to figure out what's in there, and through exploring that model, they invent a concept. So now they're inventing those ideas on their own. Rather than me simply telling them, "This is what you need to know," they develop that concept on their own. Then, a second model will come in, then they will have to apply what they learned from that first model, and the cycle repeats. So by the end of a POGO activity, you will have three or four models where it has snowballed onto itself three or four times. What I tell my students is that I don't want everyone to think like me. And in like that answer-based society, it's kind of disseminating from on high, that I want everyone, I want to create little Mr. Lane clones, and that's the last thing I want. I tell my students that through POGO and through inquiry, I want them to ask questions, and I want them to build a scaffold of their own understanding. And then when we take notes or when we do more formal instruction, they can hang those facts on that existing scaffold. So every kid's scaffold is going to be slightly different based on their experience in the group work. So this is a guided inquiry. Project-based, problem-based, and place-based education. Now, that is under the whole umbrella of PBL. And I think problem, or project-based is kind of takes the lead on that one. But I also want to bring up the other two Ps, of problem and place-based learning. Place-based learning is one that I specialize with in my environmental science class where students are outside gaining a sense of place. So it's not just the woods, it's not just outside. They are really finding themselves and finding how they interact with a specific place. Project-based, place-based, and problem-based learning is open inquiry. So open inquiry takes all that scaffold away, and now the students are given a question or a problem, which they have to explore on their own. What I have seen here is that students take a lot more responsibility, they take a lot more ownership of their learning. I've also seen a lot more social and emotional connection to the products, that they are proud of what they are creating, and they take great pride in doing it. So I've seen motivation from students that in a traditional setting may not be as successful really step up to the plate and just completely blow me away through the project-based or problem-based or place-based learning. So, that was a summary of the last six years. And over those last couple of years, I realized that I enjoyed where I was. POGO was working out well, project-based learning, place-based, problem was working well, but there was something missing. And that piece that was missing was students weren't allowed still to ask as many questions as they want. So this year, I implemented something called the Question Formulation Technique, or QFT, and it is specifically designed to get students to ask better questions. So the beginning of every unit, we begin with a question focus, and this is something as simple as a very small statement. The very first day of school, I did this, and I said, the first question focus was, "Mr. Lane teaches biology." And the students were then assigned to create as many questions as they possibly could in a limited amount of time. They then categorized those questions, they modified those questions, and then they prioritized those questions. And from each group, they then asked their priority questions to me as a way of introducing myself. Now they were asking questions about me. I've repeated this process, and what they've effectively created is their learning targets for the year, with the goal being that by the end of the year, we have questions that we still have yet to answer, leaving the students with yet more questions, knowing that they have not yet answered everything there is to know about biology in one semester. So beyond the classroom, this idea of questioning, the other piece that I think was missing beyond students asking their own questions was staff. I believe that the teacher should be just as accountable as the students. If we are going to be forcing our students to do inquiry, if we are going to lead them down that path, we ourselves have to embrace that mindset. If we're going to ask our students to take risks, if we're going to ask our students to get outside of their comfort zone, I believe that the teacher and the staff should also be outside of their comfort zone. And so one thing that I pushed for as a member of ILT was a cross-curricular PLC. The traditional PLC setup at the high school was becoming kind of a box to check for some. It was a very product-oriented, you met your goal and then you could be done. Whereas now with a cross-curricular PLC, we're inspiring and hopefully nurturing more collaboration, communication, and ultimately inquiry amongst the staff. We're tackling topics such as formative assessment and equity at the high school, and with the intent that we're not going to have an answer by the end of the school year, that this might be a multi-year endeavor, that we might end with more questions than we have answers. So really, by modeling that behavior, hopefully we can bring that down to the students then and recognize that when they are outside their comfort zone, that we can relate to that as a staff. So what's next? I truly believe that if we are going to create the future leaders of tomorrow, we have to have innovation. And I believe innovation comes from asking questions. In a question-based economy, we need to have people who can synthesize multiple forms of data. True innovation is now going to come from those who can look at that data and draw connection in places that nobody else sees connection. So I would encourage us to keep looking at inquiry and other routes to get kids to ask better questions so that they can be the future leaders of tomorrow. Are there any questions from the board?
Stacy? So, thank you for that presentation. It's very exciting to hear what you're doing. Are you able to tell us, are there a number of other teachers doing project-based learning? How do you converse with the other teachers? I know you mentioned the cross-curricular PLC. Are there other ways, and do you see this growing throughout the high school?
Yes. And I can refer to, one of the cross-curricular PLCs is a PBL PLC, so they're exploring project-based. Other science classes, all the science classes, K-12 are now doing PBL. We met three years ago, and that's been implemented K through 12. And with regards to POGO, they're now doing POGOs. I've worked with several English teachers, and they're doing POGO in other departments as well. So students are getting a similar experience and they're getting similar expectations across subject areas, which is, I think, very exciting.
Are there questions or comments? Kathy?
I just have to share a couple fun comments. Jim is just 24/7. He's just exuding that style in his life. So I'm up at my island in Canada, and there was this strange, what I thought was a fungus growing up between the pine trees. And so I said, "Fungus? No." It was Indian pipe, and it's a plant that has no chlorophyll, it's white, and it derives its nutrients from the soil.
From the roots.
Roots, parasite.
You sent Jim the picture.
Well, I posted it on Twitter, and then he responded. And I think that happened a couple of times. And then the other fun thing was the car wash for Student Leadership Council for the Randy Shaver cancer piece. And so I brought my car in, and all of a sudden, there was a huddle up around the side of my door, and apparently there was an insect that met its demise as I was driving that was then, you pulled off and you had a teachable moment, you had all the students around the thing. I was just like, that was so cool. So anyway, thank you for your--
Dead bug.
I'm embarrassed, probably an insect, not a bug, but--
There we go. I stand corrected.
So, when you're teaching, I mean, we have state mandates around state statute standards, curriculum, things like that. How do you integrate, when the students are leading, how do you integrate standards and other mandated pieces, whether it be from graduation statutes, or building principal, or district-level school board? How does all that fit together?
Well, we're very lucky in Minnesota, the state standards are not, students have to know X, Y, and Z, they're much more flexible, the students will understand that. And that's the way NGSS is written, which is coming in a couple of years. It's going to be more of that holistic, looking at the larger system rather than memorizing set things.
Science.
Science, correct. So it lends itself very easy to the inquiry approach. I do use published POGOs in class that are explicitly aligned to individual standards. When developing projects, that's a much more organic process. As we do different iterations of the projects, we have to align it to what was traditionally a, you know, notes and test unit. We then look at what are the big standards that are covered in that unit, and how are they covered in this project? So right now, my students are working on an environmental impact project that covers two chapters, traditional chapters worth of information, and it aligns and covers those standards appropriately.
Have you looked at the concept test materials?
I have not.
You should.
Okay.
I'll send you a link.
Okay.
It aligns with what you're doing. It is, it's a question that leads students, I mean, it's still a little bit more, I'll send it to you, and you can click at it.
Okay, deal.
It might fit with what you're doing, and it might not. Anything else? Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming--
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Kathy, for the support you give Jim in his teaching in his classroom.
It's fun working with him.
Good job. All right. Next item on the agenda, a report from student representative.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's been a pretty busy month at the high school. We're just over a month into school, and right now, Lunch and Learn has been going on for a few weeks. On Mondays, freshmen have advisory so they can meet with their upperclassmen, crew members, which is a new program that's been initiated at the high school to help the freshmen integrate more into the high school setting versus a middle school. And then the rest of the class, the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors have the opportunity to go to their teachers during their office hours, and then also eat lunch. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays are traditional Lunch and Learn settings, so we have two 30-minute periods to eat lunch, do homework, study, go to teachers, or like meet with a club. And then Fridays, upperclassmen have lunch together and then advisory, and it's flipped for the underclassmen so that they're able to eat like with all their friends. We've also been pretty busy, as Mr. Donovan mentioned, the Pinkout finished in September. We, SLC raised $3,599 toward Randy Shaver's Tackle Cancer Foundation with the help of the car wash that we had, and then also like kids donating during lunch to have Officer Justin pied in the face, and there was teachers in the dunk tank, so that was really fun. And then also, we raised money by collecting donations at the game. And last week was homecoming, so it was a really fun week. There was a lot of participation by the students. During Spirit Week, a lot of people dressed up, and there was, even on Camping Day, some kids camped out in front of the school, and that was really, like, it got everyone excited to have that much spirit going on within the school. And then on Friday, we had our pep fest, and that went well. It started to rain, so the parade had to be canceled, which was unfortunate. But even though it was raining and wet at the homecoming game, there was a lot of spirit in the student section. We still cheered on our team for the win. So overall, it's been a pretty successful month at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to say a few words about yourself.
About me?
You're new to our board, we'd like to know more about you.
Okay, so, I'm a junior. I'm on, I've been on SLC for three years. I'm in choir, eco club, debate, then I ski in the winter downhill and run track in the spring. I'm also in Students Advocating for Equity, which is a group led by Mrs. Mancini, and then Eco Club is with Mr. Lane. Overall, junior year's been pretty good so far. It's kind of stressful with, we just had the PSAT on Wednesday and the ACTs, but it's pretty good.
Very good.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes from August 10th, September 14th, and September 28th.
Who approves?
Thank you.
Second?
Okay. Any comments or discussion on the minutes? All those in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion information items, calendar of events. Dr. Larson?
A lot of things in the calendar of events. I hope you have everyone with that opportunity to look through them. A couple of things that are happening just next week. The O-H Anderson PTO Fun Run is happening on Tuesday the 17th, and then the O-HA Nature Trail Day is happening on Wednesday the 18th. On Friday of that week, even though it's the MEA break, we'll still have our city leaders meeting, in which we have area mayors come on in and look for ways to collaborate and share issues that we have in common. I want to draw your attention particularly, though, to Monday, October 23rd. At 7:00 PM, we're going to have a school start time evaluation, presentation, and listening session. That's going to be at the Chautauqua Fine Arts Center starting at 7:00. Many of the board members will be able to be there in attendance, and Julie Dahl from the Minnesota Sleep Society will be there to share information. At the end of that week, we have the middle school, school play coming up, and then on November 1st, the adult senior lunch. Last Wednesday, it was the adult senior community lunch, was kind of an Oktoberfest theme. I assume this one will be Thanksgiving in nature, or something along those lines. Great turnout, I would say. We had 60 people at the last one, and the whole community is welcome to attend.
Would I also like to call items out on the calendar? I would like to mention that Monday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, which Mr. Donovan brought up at a meeting earlier in looking at our calendar. And so we have asked the calendar committee to remember to look at holidays and how we acknowledge those as a district, and the calendar committee will continue to work on that as we go forward. But the original request came from thinking about Monday's holiday. So, thank you again for bringing that up, and I'll keep moving forward. Quarterly financial update. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Board, Bill Manazzi, our business manager, is here to share with the board and the community the first quarter financial update. The purpose of this is that we want to be able to ensure the board and the community has an understanding of where we are with our current year's summary, our budget summary, in order to analyze, anticipate any budget variances, and adjust the need as needed. Bill's here to present, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to--
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present, as Dr. Larson mentioned, the end of the quarter, end of the first quarter budget update. So included in your board packet and on the screen, and I do realize that it's extremely small on the screen, a little bit better in your board packet, but not by much, is the Quarter One, the 2017-18 Quarter One Budget Update. So as we know, our fiscal year runs from July through June. So the end of September was already the end of our first quarter of fiscal 2017-18. So my plan would be to present a similar document to this after the end of the second quarter in December, and then after the end of the third quarter at the end of March. And the purpose of this really is to present a similar document that we all can get familiar with as time goes on, with the purpose really being to identify variances and really analyze those variances during the year so that we don't have any surprises at the end of the year during the audit after the end of the year. So this report really looks at our three main operating funds, not to exclude the others. But this report looks at the general fund, which obviously we'll spend the majority of our time. We'll also look at the Food Service Fund and the Community Education Fund just briefly as well. So... And then the one disclaimer that I'll give, the end of the first quarter here, and so there's a lot of information on this report, but not a lot in terms of variances. So we'll go over a couple of them, but this report will get more relevant as we get further in the year and the expenditure total increases. So lots of information, lots of detail. On your spreadsheet, you can see that we go, I've laid this out by program area. So we start by looking at administration, then district support services, things like your business office, technology, clerical areas. Obviously, the majority of our expenditures are in the regular and secondary, elementary and secondary instruction. Then we have our vocational education, our career and tech programs, our special education, instructional support services and what those really are. That's our media center, staff development, and then curriculum development as well. And then pupil support services, things like our counseling and guidance, social work, health and transportation, and then finally our sites and buildings at the bottom. So there's a few main indicators, if I could just offer up a little bit of advice. A few main indicators that we want to review each quarter. The first one is we want to make sure, on the second page here, sorry to skip around, in total on the general fund, we'll want to make sure that we're reviewing the percent spent compared to the same time last year and the same time two years prior. So as we look at the spreadsheet, just by way of illustration, you can see reading from left to right, we look at our current year budget, 2017-18 budget, and then our actual expenditures as of the end of September. In the middle column, you'll see our prior year budget, in this case, 2016-17, and then expenditures at the same time in the prior year. And then finally, the second year prior, and then expenditures at the same time two years prior. And then on the far right column, which is a useful column, our expenditures for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, at this point, final but unaudited until our auditors come in November and present the final audit report. So the first indicator that we'll want to make sure we look at each quarter is the percent spent. So you can see in this case, and I had to go back and look a couple, three times, we have a very interesting situation where we are 16.8% spent this quarter, 16.8% spent prior year year-to-date, and 16.8% spent second year prior year-to-date. So obviously, in terms of overall general fund variances, we're very, very consistent with the prior year and the second prior year. But that's one thing that we'll want to look at in the end of the second quarter and the end of the third quarter as well. The other item that we'll want to make sure that we take a look at are variances by program dimension. So as we look at each program dimension, if you see large variances there, those are things that we should be reviewing as well. And I'll just point out one area where there is a rather large variances, variance, and that's on the first page in the vocational education instruction. So you can see under vocational education, the fourth line down, purchase services, excuse me, the third line down, purchase services, we've spent $88,000 this year compared to $54,000 last year, which is causing the year-to-date spent to be at 24% compared to 19% a year prior. The reason for that is just timing on intermediate 916, timing of their invoices that they've sent us. Really, any major variances that you're going to see at this time of year relate to timing of invoices that we've paid. So that's one that we'll run a review as well. The third area that we always want to make sure we're looking at is prior year actual, so the far right-hand column, compared to our budget. So as I mentioned, we're, we've spent 16.8% of our budget this year and the same amount last year. But you can see the total general fund expenditures, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, as of the end of last year, were $38,100,000. And that amount was above the 2016-17 budget of $37.8 million. So we exceeded our budget in the general fund from an expenditure standpoint by just under a percent last year. So although we've spent the same amount this year as we did last year year-to-date, we ended up exceeding our budget last year. So we'll need to make sure we review that and account for that during the revised budget this year as well. And then just any overall variances. So encourage the board, as you see fit, to ask me any questions as you get their quarterly report on any variances that you'd like explained. Certainly welcome your feedback on that. So turning over to the third page in your document here, food service and community education. Our food service fund, there's very little in there. So obviously, our payments to Stillwater for the food service fund for our employees are employed by the Stillwater School District. And they're, the variances are very similar to prior year at this point, just in so few weeks into the school year. So really not too much to note in the food service fund. And then finally, in community education, I will note, and I've talked to Dr. Wyland about this, the results are good, the budget is not. So Kathy and I will need to work to make sure we align our budget to where we're actually spending. We're in a fortunate situation in community education where they're running excellent programming and their revenue is consistently meeting their expenditures. So that is not an issue. But we just need to make sure that our budget line items line up with where we're, where we're actually spending our funds. So we will work to do that. And you'll see some changes in the community education budget in the revised budget that we'll present in December. So just an overall comment, very consistent with the prior year. You will see a similar document with updated quarter two numbers at the January meeting after the end of the second quarter.
Questions for Bill?
It's very helpful to have this for the end of classes.
You've answered all the questions before I could ask.
Great presentations before me, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, Matamidi Compensation Plan. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Sarah Dusick is here. She is our Q-Comp Coordinator. She's also our equity lead. And she's going to share with us the Q-Comp goals that each of the building has. So thank you for being here. And with that, I can turn it over to you, Sarah, Ms. Dusick.
Thank you for having me in to share the site goals that have been created for the MCP program. Just a little initial, like how we do our goal creation. In August, we bring all of the data teams together from the four, from the four sites. And we kind of analyze and go through all of the district-wide data and then also our individual site data. And from that, we create several goals. Many of them, you've already seen through the World's Best Workforce and they're available on the World's Best Workforce. The Q-Comp goal, or the MCP goal, comes out of the individual site goals that are created through the data that they look at that day. Typically, the site goals, once they go forward, they bring a couple of recommended goals to the buildings. And then the buildings typically vote on which goal they want to be used for their site goal for, for the Q-Comp process. The state requirement for the Q-Comp goals are that they want it to be as school-wide as possible. And then it has to be achievement gains. It can't be just a steady maintain. It has to be a gain goal. And school-wide is just impacting as many teachers and students as possible and stay within the, the expectations of it being a standardized assessment as well. And then the gains is typically an acceptable gain is 3% or higher is what they look for. But then in the goals that we create, they ask for three years' worth of trend data. So what has that, what has that growth looked like over the course of the past three years? So with that, we have the high school goal. This year, the high school chose to use the composite benchmark for the ACT scores. So they'll be looking at the composite score for the class of 2019, the current juniors. And their goal is to have 78% of the current class of 2019 achieve a composite benchmark of 21 or higher on the ACTs. And you can see the trend data on that. 2014-15, there was an 82% point, 82.2% of them, of the students had a 21% or higher for the junior class. And then you can see 74.2. And then last year, it was 75.0, which gave them the 78% for a 3, 3% gain on the 20, 21 of composite score of the ACT. For Matamidi Middle School, they are using the NWEA MAP scores in the subject of math. And they are hoping to have a growth, individual growth projection increase from 68.3% in the fall to 71.3% in the spring of 2018. And that is for grades six through eight. You can see the trend data there, that the end mark was 68.3 with the growth up to 71.3. OHA Anderson Elementary is using the MCAs in reading. And they are hoping to have an increase from 76.1% students either proficient or exceeding standards, up to 79.1% in reading. The trend data is also available there. And then for Wildwood, they are using the second grade students. They are also using the MAP in reading. And they want 80% of their second grade students at or above grade level at the spring MAP testing. They were currently at 65.2, so that was quite a bit bigger gain than the 3%. That's kind of the typical threshold. And then for the Passages Program, they are using the Bergantz Test. And they're kind of a unique site because we don't have trend data on them because they're in their second year. But also, their students are unique. And so their goals are based on the needs of the students for that year. So this year, their biggest need was reading and comprehending medicine, medicine labels. So they gave them an initial Bergantz test on reading and comprehending the medicine labels. And they, their goal is that 90, the students at Passages who did not score 90% or higher, that they'll make a four-point gain on their Bergantz assessment from the fall Bergantz to the spring Bergantz. They'll test again in the spring and make sure that those students who did not score 90% on that test will at least make a four-point gain. So if they scored a 71, they would make a 75 for that individual student. That's our four site goals. These were submitted to the state on October 2nd for approval. We haven't gotten official approval back on the site goals. If any of them change and we have to do a rewrite, when we have the finalized, accepted, approved goals, I'll submit those to you for final analysis.
Maybe I, I just haven't, I've never heard of the Bergantz test before. So are there all kinds of different themes to that test because you said they're doing?
Yeah, there's different, there's different standards to it. And like last year, they did like preparation for work going out into the workforce. So there's different subtests underneath the Bergantz test. And so the need that they had this year was understanding for the safety of the students reading medicine labels. So they just took that subtest out of the Bergantz and they pre-assessed the students that they serve. And then the students who didn't get a 90% on that initial assessment are included into the goal then.
And then are there so many of those tests they have to take to complete the program? Or?
I don't, yeah, Beth, can you, can I defer to you on that one?
It is, it's more career college readiness.
Sorry.
There's several subtests to it. So it's really looking at career and college readiness. So it might be interview skills. It would be just life skills in regards to reading medicine labels. So what they will do with each child or each student is look at what their needs are and then build their academics around what that looks like for them. Does that?
Yep.
And then I can also get you more description of the different subtest.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just couldn't, I couldn't really remember what it was.
Yeah, no, I just looked at it last week, so I was able to answer your questions.
Other questions?
Just so that I am following, the assessment result, is that from this fall?
The bottom trend data, where it says starting value?
Yes.
That was where they were in the fall.
Okay.
So what the current data is. So then we have to make growth from the current data over the span.
And then you'll check it in the spring.
Yes. Or when the, when the tests are, so the MCA tests, we won't know the results until the MCA results are out. So it's when the results come forward that we compare the results to whether they achieved their goal or not.
And so when you set your goal, you don't know what that starting value will be? Or because weren't the, weren't the goals set before these tests were taken?
Like you're looking at the, the ACTs. So last year's juniors, yeah, so they, if, like OHA Anderson, who's using the MCA scores, they went off of the MCA results for last year. So the last year's results were that it was 76.1% of students were at, at proficiency or exceeding proficiency. So they took the information from last year's data to create this year's data to make it that they want the 79.1% to be proficient or higher for this year.
Okay. So they did have, they had that number when they set the goal?
Yeah, oh yeah. They have those numbers when they set the goal.
Or the data, I mean, because what you're saying is that we take last year's fourth graders and use their score to set the goal for this year's fourth graders. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I know, which isn't...
Okay, that's what I was trying to add.
Yeah, I think that's what you're trying to add.
Right.
But do we have the option to take the third grade data to make the fourth grade goal?
Their goal is...
So you're looking at the same group of students over time?
And their goal spans third through fifth grade, if you look at the, like the MCAs.
I was just using them as...
It's not just for one individual grade.
Oh, sure.
It's so all third through fifth graders will, the percentage for the building, for third through, through fifth graders who take the MCAs, will make, will be proficient or exceed proficiency at 79.1%. So 79.1% of the students that are currently in the building. So that, yeah, that would work if we just did third and fourth because this year, the fifth grader, last year, where that data was, the fifth graders are now in sixth grade. And so it's just for the building to make it so that we're making...
And so we're still not, and the total N, isn't the total N being tested this year? There's still a third of the students who have left the building and a different third have come in to muddy, I mean, and that's a state piece. That's not us deciding to do that. That's the way the state has designed the Q-Comp program.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Action items. 10A, approval of the resolution for the renewal of the designation of the identified official with authority for the MD External User Access Recertification System. Wow. Dr. Larson?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, this is an annual resolution that we have to adopt. And the Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts, charter schools, or other organizations annually designate an identified official with the authority to comply with the State Access Control Securities Standard 1.0, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota's state system must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will sign job dues and authorize external users' access to the secure systems for their local agency, educational agency. And I have been that person the last several years. And the superintendent recommends that the board or equivalent governing board authorize said superintendent, me in this instance, to act as identified official with authority of the Matamidi Public School District Number 832. This is an annual resolution.
I need approval. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. School Board Committee Reports. AMSD. What?
I had a medical emergency that morning and I wasn't able to attend. Mark did, though.
If I can speak a little bit to what happened at the...
Association Metropolitan School Districts. The School Trust Fund lands was part of the topic of conversation. And all the students in the state of Minnesota can be considered themselves to be trust babies because years and years ago, there was a set aside designation of some of the lands, mostly in the Boundary Waters, that can be generating some funds for students and for school districts. There's a lot of work still to be done, but a really positive step was appointing a commissioner of that, appointing a person to oversee the program, and taking it out of the hands of the Department of Natural Resources. I can't report on any money or any...
I can't report on any money or anything that's happened along those lines, but we are moving in the right direction.
That's good.
At the September 18th meeting, Ellie Bruner was present and gave her mission moment for the Wildwood Artist Series, and if you haven't had a chance to get your tickets, the concerts are starting, so hopefully everyone has a chance. What date is the Okie Dokie Brothers?
Oh, it was last Saturday, and it was sold out, we were there, and it was phenomenal, it was just so great, we're so lucky to have them come to Motto Medai, so I'm very grateful for the work that they do, that we get those kinds of concerts in our city, in town.
So get your tickets for the next ones because it's like they're all very popular.
Yes.
Also, in November will be the Fall Fund Drive, so next time, everyone should bring their checkbooks. Kevin and I also had a chance to go and visit O-H Anderson last week to visit the Artisan Residence with Mr. Smith, one of the Steele Brothers.
JD.
JD, and it was phenomenal.
I attended one also.
It was phenomenal.
I thought our kids were so lucky to have that experience.
And he's working with the choirs and at their winter concert that will be, it's in January. Mr. Steele is helping them coordinate their music program, so it should be pretty, it should be pretty amazing, it'll be at St. Andrews, so anyway, it was a great, great thing to get to witness, so.
Thank you. MSBA, Kevin?
MSBA, we have a MSBA board meeting on this past weekend, and it was the first glimpse at the resolutions that are being brought forward from school districts across the state. There are currently 24 resolutions, there might be more because you can, with the suspension of the rules, you can bring other ones to the floor the day of the event in December. But of the 24 that are currently out there, four of them come from Motto Medai, so we are highly overachieving board on resolutions, and I'm glad I was there because a few of them, they didn't fully get kind of the intent, and so we have them all being looked at, and it looks like they'll be recommended to move forward, and I'm just, again, I'm glad I was there because I think a couple of them would have not gone forward, so. What else, what else, what else? So the Delegate Assembly is December 1st and 2nd, December, and it's always cold and snowy, so. And Julie is our delegate from Motto Medai this year, thank you Julie for doing that, and I think that's what I have to report.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one other thing, tomorrow is a listening session over in Hopkins at the Eisenhower Community Center, so for MSBA is going to have this listening session kind of geared towards the metro district, so if anybody, I'm going over, if anybody wants to attend also, just let me know after the meeting, I can give you the scoop.
How does 24 resolutions compare with the number being offered up?
It's maybe a little low, but again, we may yet have some that come forward on the floor, yeah. So it seems to me it's 27 to 30. When I've had to actually have the gavel, there's more, I mean, it's funny how that works, but it's interesting, again, it's the normal kind of funding, a lot of funding, a lot of tax, a lot of that kind of thing that's there. And Lucy had one that, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but it's just kind of a template on best practices, and that one sailed right through.
Well, that one had support from Denise Dietrich. So remember, MDE asked for board members through AMSD to do the ESA committees, and so I served on the ESA committees, and so the ESA committee wrapped up on the assessment piece, and we had a report, and then the MDE rep said, well, here's your report, it goes on the MDE website, and we're like, well, wait a minute, how do we get this stuff to happen? You know, we spent all this time since January working on this, and so I was brainstormed afterwards and we submitted it, and Denise was part of that group as well, but we tied it to me because I was in the room, and it's, you know, we need an assessment system that is transparent, that is pretty much reasonable. I worked with Denise on it, we had a lot more specific recommendations from the ESA group, but when you get too specific any recommendation, that ties our lobbyists down this very narrow track, and so we made it broad enough that they could lobby based upon how things shift and change in committees and conversations at the Capitol to make sure our assessment system with ESA and testing and things works out. So there will be more details, the final report I think is coming out to MDE website this week. I have one more draft to look at before it goes public, I think, and then if you want more details, but pretty much it's just that, you know, transparency piece, which is what we want, so.
916 Board.
Those minutes are in your packet, I will say that we're looking for a finance guy.
No.
She did promise not to pilfer from the districts, but if any of our district finance people wanted to meet with her, she'd be happy to meet with them. But to the Bring Your Checkbook, I'll trade my check for Maeve, for a check to 916.
For the Society Foundation?
Yes.
Is the gavel coming up?
I think it's January, maybe January.
Well, in the past, we've done a piece, and so maybe the study session, we can talk about the-
That'd be great.
Right, as a board.
I'm just looking for cash.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, it's a study session when we have our checkbooks.
But they're looking for, you know, they want as many people-
In attendance.
It's the Fall Fund Drive. The foundation, it's a membership drive, so $10 or $50 or $100, they can say, you know what, every member of every school board, as part of our organization, supports the foundation, because all of our kids, I mean, they give money back to every district, so they're looking for 100% participation, even if all you have is a dollar.
Right, right. That's very important, thank you.
I assume that we did this last year, there was occurrence with the vote.
Right, yes, I think we did. So we'll address that the study session, which will be still timely enough for both those groups. School Board Subcommittee Reports, tonight was Policy Committee, and so Stacy, Mike, Mark and I looked at policies, we have some new policies required by statute, we have some new recommended policies from MSBA, we made some suggestions for those policies, and those will come around for First Read the next board meeting. There are some things we have to do this year, but not so timely, they need to come up before then, so we've got some time there because remember, it takes three readings, and so we've given some initial input after some thought and discussion, so they should be in pretty good shape when they come to the full board for the first reading in a month or so. Any other groups, Stacy?
The Community Ed meeting took place last week, and a lot has been happening, so we got an update, and it's all good, a lot of good things, but I thought I would just point out a few of the upcoming events. There's Punkin Mania this Saturday, the Quilters Country Fair is October 20th and 21st, the Fourth Annual Craft Fair in Vender Blender is on November 3rd and 4th, and the 15th Annual Motto Redi, which is a book study, and the author comes to Motto Medai, is on November 6th, and then the Veterans Day Ceremony is on November 11th. So lots of activity, as Bill had mentioned in his report, that they are doing well financially, so I feel like there are always, there's lots going on, and every age in our community has a chance to participate and really benefits from the programming.
Mike, you want to speak about PTO?
Mark attended, we all attended a PTO listening session last Thursday, a week ago, and it was a really nice turnout, a lot of questions came up about the school study start time, and we are hoping to get a lot more information at the upcoming other sessions, and we're getting a lot of good information back from the public.
I also attended that meeting, and I took notes from the 60 people that attended, and if anyone has an interest in any of the comments or questions that were asked by parents, all 34 of them, I typed them up, if anyone has an interest, I'd be happy to send them.
You should share that with everybody.
Okay, okay.
Want to send it to Mark, can Mark pass it to that?
Sure. I have an electronic, so come through email?
Yes. That'd be great, that'll be helpful to our upcoming listening session with the community to address the questions that have already arisen as more continue to surface. What about the Finance Committee? Did the Finance Committee meet before the study session last time? Is that right? No? Okay, I'm off, sorry.
We met two times ago.
Okay, so there was nothing.
And gave you the same presentation, the short version.
All right, any other items or reports? Kevin?
I just have one thing, I put in everybody's spot, there's a leadership tomorrow, pamphlet, and so it's informational, it's just something that the community is working on. The Rotary Chamber of Commerce and the Greater White Bear Lake community foundation is working on a leadership program that will be modeled after the leadership's in call, that it's been applied over the years, but if you know of any candidates that might benefit from something like this, and not becoming leader, and finding the values, please feel free to tap them on the shoulder or help them for sure.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, three things, one is that we got our annual report back from College in the Schools, as you know, many of our students participate in the College in the Schools program, you've heard me say this before, that I think a Motto Medai education can be something of a revenue stream for families. At the high school this last year, we had 215 unduplicated counts of students who participated in one or more classes. 215 students, we had 264 registrations, so that means that some of those students took two classes. Of those 264 classes, 256 of the students in that, that's 97%, got a C or higher, and they earned 1,201 University of Minnesota credits. If you count the University of Minnesota credit as the equivalent of $482.54, which is what they use, it means that our students generated for themselves and their families $579,531 in University of Minnesota credits. That's a remarkable amount of money that they have saved their families, and I think it's a credit to our teachers and to the curriculum that we're doing that prepares students so well to be so successful. It does come with a cost, though, it cost the school district about $38,300, we have to pay fees to the University of Minnesota for College in the Schools program, it's a high amount, $38,000,000, but I think it's worth it when you see the students walking out with over a half million dollars of credit. I think it's a remarkable amount that we have there. The second thing is just some work that's been going on in the district, there's been a lot of things that have been happening. One of the things that Sarah Dusick was here before, and she attended along with six others, she and I, a Reimagine Minnesota presentation. We've been working on World Cafes as part of our equity work for the last year now, and the Reimagine Minnesota, its purpose is to ensure the constitutionally guaranteed right to an adequate education of all students by creating a comprehensive collection action plan to address integration, access, opportunity, and educational achievement, that's their mission statement. And of all the districts in the metropolitan area that participated in the World Cafes, 46 of them, we were in the first group, there were 12 of us that were there together to examine three things. We wanted to look at barriers and then work on solutions around them, and we'll be having other meetings, but there are three things that this is broken down into. The first one is see all, effective diverse stakeholders who use trusty relationships to create welcoming classrooms, schools, and communities that meet the needs of all students and families. Then we want to be able to serve all, personalized relevant education for all students that guarantees access to rigorous learning and elimination predictability based on race. And we want to support all, equitable resources, time, talent, and funds aligned to every student needs that enable every district to see all and serve all. We spent a lot of time on that, there's a good document that's come out, we'll be having other meetings, our group will meet, work individually, we'll come together to share successes and pitfalls and see if there's other barriers that we can have, that we can find out, because this is a really important issue that we want to be very successful at. The other thing that we've been working on is some things in the area of innovation, and today was the first day we rolled out the ZEPFIR Idea Challenge, ZEPFIR Idea Program, excuse me, ZIP, the acronym, ZEPFIR Idea Challenge, and ideas is plural there. We want to be able to have people create ideas, ask questions, and perhaps solve some problems that we don't know that we've had yet. And one of the things about innovation that we need to be thinking about is that it can be huge and disruptive, it can be small, but it's going to be something that's going to make it different for students. Some of it might be as simple as changing the way, instead of an answer economy to a questioning economy, that makes a big difference. There might be some other things, too. Sometimes it's taking things away, if you think about a store that doesn't have any infrastructure or walls or plumbing or electrical or heating, you might come up with Amazon. Innovation sometimes can be by adding some things, too. If you determine predetermined pricing for the consumer, knowledge about who's providing the service, you might come up with Uber. But there are other things, and history's a good example of that. Clayton Christensen tells a story about the Fulton-powered steamships. When these were first invented, they were not used across the ocean because they were deemed not as reliable as the wind. Today, that would be a laughable comment, but he stuck with it and they worked on the inland seas with that, and so it became something that they worked on inland, not in the ocean, and eventually they improved, the technology got better, and it became something that was very disruptive. Our hope with our ZIP program is that we'll have small innovations, small ideas that can grow and can improve the education for all of our students. We're excited about the rollout, we already have three ideas that have been posted, we're expecting to be a lot more, it's a crowdsourcing opportunity for all staff to enter ideas, for people to provide comments or suggestions, and then we'll have a pairing off of them in a competition that will come back to our innovation task force to look at that. So all in all, we're off to a great start. Homecoming was a terrific week last week, I thought it was just fantastic, and I'm really sorry about the weather, I know some of us were out there in the rain with desserts for alumni, and I'm sorry about that, too, but it really was raining at 4:30. But we're off to a really good start, and I think with innovation and Reimagine Minnesota, we're doing two things that are really going to be beneficial for our students and community.
Second?
Meeting adjourned.